Good afternoon, everyone.
Missing something?
And welcome to the January 6th work session for the Salisbury City Council. At this time, we are going to convene in closed session as per Maryland Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B 714 to discuss, to consult with council to obtain a legal advice on a legal matter and before a contract is awarded or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to negotiating strategy, the contents of the bid proposal, if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in competitive building or proposal process. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is five zero. We are now in closed session. Have to keep these things in the way. Good evening, everyone. We're just come out of closed session and in the closed session, we discussed 407 Anne Street disposition, lot 16 in the Salisbury Green, 130, 132, 144 East Main Street, parking agreement, air rights agreement, and temporary construction easement. We'll now go into our work session and the first item on the work session is an ordinance to accept the funds from Bless Our Children Housing and Community Development. Mr. Howard is...
How are you doing?
Good evening. How are you? Happy New Year.
Good. Happy New Year. The, I got two items on the agenda that my folks are fairly straightforward and simplistic. The first one is the Bless Your Children donation for, to support our Santa's workshop, which we received this year. It was a monetary, it's a $2,000 monetary donation and if you accept that, then we will... There we go. See, that's better. I was trying to keep some distance from you. I got a little bit of a bug and I don't want to give it to you. Maybe you guys should back out. Anyway, it's a $2,000 monetary donation that we receive on an annual basis. We receive a donation from the Bless Our Children WBOC fund drive to support our Santa's workshop, which helps provide gifts and presents to children who may not necessarily receive that much for Christmas, allows them to participate in the holidays. This year, we had a very nice...
It was amazing. It really was good.
Yeah, very nice event. We had 230 kids that were, that received gifts and presents and books and had about 350 total people attend.
Fantastic.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it was great. It was a nice event. Okay, do we have consensus to accept the donation?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's item number one.
All right.
Free library project.
Fantastic. The second item, the free library project, we started researching, Housing and Community Development Department started researching free libraries in order to put a free library in front of the Tred Street Community Center. In our research, we came across a, an example of a free library that we were fairly impressed with. It is a metal fabricated library, which was constructed by Peninsula Roofing. Essentially, it is a very, very sturdy library, which my opinion is you could probably hit it with a truck and then just stand it back up and tow the truck away. So, and part of our consideration for the free library was whether, you know, the sturdiness and, you know, ability to hold up to weather and whatever, you know, for use durability. We reached out to Peninsula Roofing based on what we found there and tried to get an estimate on a free library from them. In that process, he basically volunteered to build us eight libraries at his expense and donate, he wishes to donate them to the city through his company, Peninsula Roofing.
Fantastic.
The total monetary, it's about $5,000 in material and about $7,500 in value by the time he has labor and powder coating, they're powder coated. And if you accept, then we would place one of these immediately in front of the Tred Street Community Center, but they are also in the city blue.
Fantastic.
So that we could easily recognize it as a city project. And we'd put some, you know, we still would want to probably put some Salisbury decals or something on there, but it's a very generous donation offer that he's...
How many is he gonna donate? How many?
Eight. He's done eight of them.
Eight?
That's fantastic.
Oh, man.
And I've got a source for books.
And we, the Wycom, through the Wycomica County Library and through SU, we have been promised basically unlimited amount of resource of books to supply these libraries with. We would, we would actually go around and make sure they're stocked through the Housing and Community Development Department.
Fantastic.
Yeah, because that's used to put them up a few places.
That's great.
That's amazing.
That's great.
Do you, what other locations?
I love Salisbury.
We were looking at potentially some of the Salisbury, city Salisbury parks. We could potentially also, you know, select certain neighborhoods that might be short of a, of a free library, based on need. We haven't fully selected all the, you know, locations. We, like I said, initially, we started with the, the community centers in mind. We already sort of have one down at the Community Garden in front of Main Street, so...
Right across the street.
Yeah. So we're probably gonna try not to compete necessarily with that one.
Gotcha.
There's all other places. Prince Street.
I really, I love this idea.
Yeah, there's, there's numerous neighborhoods that don't, that don't have free libraries. Some of our parks already have some, some of them don't. It would just be a matter of going around and once we acquire these and bigger now location.
Very cool.
Very nice.
It is.
Okay.
I just love it.
That's cool.
I just love it here.
That's Salisbury.
This is so good.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Okay.
How nice for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's Peninsula Roofing, right?
Ms. Lans?
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce someone?
Yes. So, good evening, council. I'd like to introduce Chase Phillips from Giveaways. Chase was one of my students from my class at SU this past fall and Chase is going to be interning in the Infrastructure and Development Department with Anne doing planning work. He's a Urban Studies and Planning major at SU and we're trying to keep him here for grad school, so we're excited to have him.
Welcome, Chase.
A noble profession.
Hello.
Takes you nowhere, clearly.
Prejudice.
Little bias.
A little bias, just slightly.
Not much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, 130, 132, 144 East Main Street. Soil MOU resolution.
Yes.
Ms. Paul.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, council president. How are you?
Good.
Best Michael Sullivan and Nick Simpson to join us. So we have five items on the agenda dealing with 130, 132, and 144 East Main Street. So I thought it would be helpful to do a project overview before we got into the details of each of these five agreements.
Okay.
So I'm going to turn it over to Nick. He's prepared a PowerPoint and we'll kind of give you the history and the overview of the project.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. Let me stay here?
Yeah.
All right. So you guys are looking at 144, which is the current chamber building off to the left. That is the six-story building to the left. It's connected with a walking bridge on the fourth floor over to 132 East Main Street, which is known as the Ross. And after, after purchase of all of the properties, they will, will do a lot line, or a lot line...
Reconfiguration.
Reconfiguration, so that it's one large parcel. It'll be a landmark in downtown with a total of 276 beds, or I think it might be 256. I apologize, I put this together earlier today. We'll have an event space on the top floor of the Ross and we'll have a walking bridge directly to the parking garage, as you can see there. This is an overview of Phase One, which was the two buildings, 130 and 132 East Main. And then you have the Phase Two, which is the six-story building that we're here today about, that is located over top of the chamber. So as you guys know, we're going to be maintaining the front facades of 130 and 132 East Main and then constructing a 12-story building. And then Phase Two is demolishing the current chamber in its entirety and building a six-story This is a rendering of the proposed sites.
Can I make a note real quick on the rendering?
Sure.
So if you'll see in between the two buildings, that's our, yes, that there's a nice little park, which is also the stormwater management features.
Right. Thank you for pointing that out.
Bicycle parking.
Now we'll be open to the public.
Yes.
It's not just for this development.
Right. And then I think it's also important to note, we'll maintain setbacks from Baptist Street of 15 feet to stay away from the power lines that are currently there. Unless the city wants to bury them.
I was just going, you beat me to lunch. I was going to say, or you could bury them.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm already, I'm reeling from the, the power lines in the back still, so...
But by the rule of you saying it first, I guess.
Yeah. I wish it could stay in true here. So tenant amenities, fully furnished apartments, it'll be all utilities. This is purpose-built student housing of gyms, study rooms, coffee bars, rooftop deck. We're looking to really provide the full service and we're working with American Campus, which is the largest property management company in the country. And they're really coming in and providing all of the finished materials that are really working well in their 300-plus properties. The event space located on the 12th floor and the 13th, well, like the roof 13th area would have 200-person capacity and really it's designed for business conferences during the week as well as weddings on the weekends. So we have, so you have top floor, the, the top right is actually the rooftop area. That's a, a nano wall that would be able to open up, so you'll have an indoor/outdoor space on the roof. And then you have your grand staircase coming down from the, the roof into the full room, which I actually don't have here. And then you also have a green room and all of the, the different accommodations, like a catering kitchen and full bathrooms. This is the overall project. It's a, it's an aerial view. Couple of views of that. This is actually a view of the exact height from the, from the top floor and I got a couple photos of that, so bear with me. Going towards the courthouse. Looking at the hospital and up towards SU. If you guys see that spot right there, that is actually the bell tower.
Bell tower.
Yeah.
And these are gonna be college?
These would be college, student housing. Yep.
I have no question.
So it's purpose-built student housing. Yep.
The name is intriguing. Where did the name come from?
Sure. Well, the short answer is it's my middle name, but the long answer is there's, well, and, and I used to say that I won't, I'm like the sixth generation to get that. I've always wanted to give my first child that middle name. This certainly feels like it, so...
Yeah.
So that's where, yeah, sure.
It's baby.
And then...
So it's not the Ross from Friends?
No, it's not from Friends. No. And then down...
Smaller one is the Rachel.
Yeah, because there'd be some mystery behind it, so you know, I mean, you wanna...
There we go.
It's so cool.
And then that would be from down the corner.
It's lovely.
Thank you.
So when's the ribbon cutting?
Well, so the chamber decided to go and sell their, their property on us and that was just a hurdle to overcome. And because the property used to be a filling station, we had to do a lot of environmental tests, which will delay, I mean, has delayed our closing on financing because they're never gonna close on anything until they know that the environmental issues are, are settled. So we've been doing testing for months and, and trying to keep on track here because we're trying to stay on track for August of 2021 and we're, we're doing well so far, provided there's no other hiccups, so...
Yeah.
But that was, that was the...
It's important.
The hiccup. And then, but August of 2021 is when we're looking to have occupancy of everything.
Is wanting to.
Wanting to.
And my granddaughter will be doing college.
So the, the 13-story, well, it's the height of, it's the height of like 165 feet, which has got 12 stories of occupied floor, but you have like diff, when I say 13, it's because you have to build the roof in concrete as well, so it, I keep saying that, but it's, it's because of the, the way that we construct it. That entire building is made out of concrete, so it's a much longer building to construct. But the building next door is one story of concrete and then we're, it's a podium construction with five stories of wood above it, much faster to build. So we can do about a floor a week in panelized wood construction for the second building, where the other one takes almost two weeks of floor.
Similar to the Seagull Square.
Very similar, very similar, yeah.
Or a lot of Ocean City construction. Amanda, I, I was gonna ask you and Nick, if I could, to, can, can you explain to the council, like the status current, you know, permitting and...
That's what I was just gonna say, actually.
I'm just gonna sit here and be quiet.
So the original Phase One has been through the Board of Zoning Appeals because it needed a density and height variance and then through Historic District Commission and Planning Commission. So now we will repeat the necessary steps for Phase Two. Now it does not need anything through Board of Zoning Appeals, but we'll go through Planning Commission and Historic District Commission. And then the items that we have on the agenda tonight, the capacity fee waiver has been done for Phase One. We'll talk about Phase Two and then the soil EDU and the other easements, so...
One thing to add there, we do have to go through Board of Zoning Appeals...
Oh, do you now?
Only for requests as it relates to increase in the permitted density.
Okay.
It allows 40 units per acre. If you take 144 East Main and the other property that's also the subject of this project is 119 East Market Street, that property is also owned by the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce. It's also under contract. It would be part of a consolidated acquisition. You take those two footprints, you add them together, you get to somewhere in the range of about five point, or .583 acres, so 31 units across a half an acre, more or less, still falls short of the permitted density, or you could say it actually goes above the permitted density. And as a result, we submitted actually 20 minutes before we came here today, the application for special exception, requesting an increase in the permitted density as it relates to 144 East Main and 119 East Market.
And we are in process of reviewing the stormwater plan, so the site plan review's been underway. So...
It's due for the, it's on the Planning Commission's schedule for next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start going through each of the items one by one. So the, the first item that we have in front of you is a request to use soil that we have at the wastewater treatment plant that was excess soil after construction. We have a very large soil stockpile at the plant. Field Ops has been using it for different projects around town. This will be the second time this type of agreements come before you for the soils. The previous one has since expired, so if that developer decides to use again, you'll, you'll see us here talking about it. But essentially, the agreement allows them to utilize the soil at the wastewater plant. They would have to go and put it in the dump truck, haul it to the site, so the, the full burden of hauling is, is on the developer. We've set times, established times that the treatment plant is open, so they would coordinate with plant staff to be there during times when the plant is open. They would be responsible for all sediment erosion control and everything else with the soil. So the agreement was based off of dates from a letter that Nick provided, that they would begin soil pickup no later than June 1st of this year. They would complete transporting all the soil and commence the site work no later than December 31st of this year and obtain certificate of occupancy no later than August 15th of 2021. So those are the dates in the agreement. It does have a provision and a cost per square yard if this is not met. So we do have plenty of soil. There's no concerns about quantity at this time.
Yeah, you can pick as much as you want. Tons of it.
We didn't have any revisions or modifications as it was presented to us.
Okay, we all right with soil?
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. All right, the second document in front of you is a potential parking agreement, also called a developer's agreement. So what Nick is proposing as first move properties is to purchase parking permits for each of the tenants that would be in the two buildings. So this is, you know, a little bit different. Our parking code is usually based on number of units and, and spaces per unit. This is actually a parking space for each tenant, but we're not proposing a discount in the rate. So they would pay the, the typical market rate, what the city sets every year in the budget, for these parking spaces. I provided in the memo just some information about the parking garage. It has 703 spaces and we currently have 441 permits that are, that are issued. Therefore, there are 262 unpermitted spaces. On average, Field Operations estimates that there are 250 open spaces on a typical day. This request is for 256 spaces. The applicant does understand that during large events like National Folk Festival, the permit holders are not guaranteed parking availability. Obviously, people will be able to park there during events. And there are some other projects coming in the near future that would put a demand on parking. However, Lot One will be providing their own parking spaces as well as the Lot 16 apartments will provide their own parking spaces. So there are a couple of things we wanted to mention with this agreement and maybe Mark can chime in with the lease, but the city can only provide a maximum of a three-year lease. And then we wanted to add language that would say that the city has the ability to repair, rebuild, or redevelop the parking garage and if we have that need, we would close the skywalk and remove it and replace it at the city's cost and that the city would provide alternative parking for the permit holders at that time. So those are some things we will add to the agreement.
Okay. Questions? Okay.
Okay. All right. The next item is the air rights easement. So essentially, this, this easement provides, provides the right to the, to the air over the alleyway where the, the walkway will go between the, the new building and the parking garage. So the, the only change that we have based on the easement agreement that you have is that the, the easement was requesting the rights to unrestricted light and air to over and within the easement area. And we'd like to strike the words "light" and, so that it's giving exclusive rights to the air, therefore giving us the ability to build the parking garage taller in the future if need be. We can't necessarily guarantee the same level of light.
And also the, the air that will be allowed will be whatever is reasonable for the bridge and the repair of the bridge, not to the heavens. So we're, we're gonna put something here.
Okay. Any questions about that?
No.
Okay.
Okay. The next easement document that you have before you is for both a temporary construction easement and for a permanent maintenance easement. So because the city has ownership of the alleyway and the, the applicant is again confirming that the city is the only owner of the alley, they need to get an easement to be able to perform construction in that area. So this would allow them to perform construction and then maintain that walking bridge with a permanent, a perpetual maintenance easement. And essentially, from discussions, we have a proposed traffic control plan, but it's, it's very likely that they will purchase parking permits to relocate the business owners that park in that alley and relocate them during construction. Is that still your...
Yeah, especially as it pertains to the Health Department.
Right.
Yes.
That's a critical one.
Yeah, so that will move them and, and get them in the garage during construction of the walking bridge, so their, their cars aren't anywhere near where construction would be. So, and, and first move properties will be doing that at their expense and providing those permits.
Okay.
Well, the only, the only other issue that we just need to address is the, it was mentioned that during events that other people could park there, but given the tightness of the, the amount of permits that have been issued and what's been issued now, the city does not anticipate there being an issue with too many people to park, but they're, they're not guaranteeing your residents a spot at any time. So in other words, we believe there will be enough, but if any time the thing fills up, you know, it's every, all the people who get the permits will be in the same position. If there's a spot, you can park there and if it turns out you pull in and every spot is full, then that's just the way it is. That was all I was saying.
So that would happen most of the time during the events?
The only time I can really envision that happening is when there's events, but I...
It wasn't even full during the National Folk Festival.
Right.
Because I parked there.
Right. That's the only time it's likely to happen.
Yeah.
But, you know, because we're, I mean, most of your residents, we understand, will be in the evening, most of the business people will be here during the day. The city doesn't anticipate it being, probably just can't guarantee you spots to the point where we'd end up having to provide, you know, if it's full that day, we gotta give you a spot down by the government office building. That, that's not what they're, what the agreement is intended to.
Does the city have any intention to issue a larger amount of parking permits?
Not at this time. We didn't know.
Anybody can buy a parking permit.
Right.
Well, with, with limitation, we, we don't, we rarely ever overissue permits based on a number, like if it's a permit-only lot, there is a, there is some math that says if you issue, you know, 105% of the spaces, it'll still only perform at 75%. And I don't, I don't have that information, but this being a, a daily parking and a permit parking garage and using the rough numbers that we have, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't, we do stop issuing permits once we reach, you know, max, you know, which in the case of the garage, might be, you know, 100% or it might be less than 100% because we got daily parkers too. But, you know, based on this agreement, we would never, to your point, we would never not issue the permit to the resident.
Then presumably, if it was at capacity and some individual who had a, a parking permit for the parking garage was unable to park at the facility because it was at capacity, that, that permit would allow them to park in some other municipal authorized and regulated parking space? Excuse me, I apologize. Thank you.
So often you need the mic closer.
How's this sound? So with respect to the, the parking garage, in the event that it was filled to capacity and one of the residents of the Ross were unable to park there because just flat out there weren't enough available parking spaces, with the parking permit that is extended to the resident, or excuse me, to any permutee of the parking garage, does that extend and authorize them to park at some other municipal authorized lot? Or is it color-coded to an extent of like, no, I'm sorry, that's a permit for the parking garage. You're... You're located in, I don't know, I'm thinking the lot that's across from my office.
It is color-coded, but not always by lot. There's a bunch of different.
No, it says the lot number on them. But I think if we get to that situation, when we get to that situation, we'll have to have some sort of rollover thing where we can't let people not park, so.
As I'm listening to it, in the back of my mind, and, you know, I'm just thinking, there is no way that we could be able to address this type of circumstance proactively. I think that eventually, it would just be a scenario, which is a reoccurring problem that would get administered after the fact and be able to address the problem specifically as opposed to hypothetically.
Well, the area in which we can be proactive with respect to parking is planning for the replacement of the garage.
Absolutely.
And we've got language that, you know, we'd like -- are we -- did we already pass that?
What you -- yes, what you -- it was already referenced there. We didn't have any questions about that. Makes all the sense in the world.
But I think the -- there are some ways to be somewhat proactive about it. I mean, you know, nearby lots and the garage, you know, if we're experiencing less of a demand, you know, a permit, a type of permit could be issued that allows, you know, parking without special enforcement, you know, to the garage and certain lots. You see what I'm saying?
No, I know exactly what you're saying.
That's a possibility. If it came to that, you know, prior to reconstruction or redevelopment of the garage, which is, again, a long time off, you know, 15 to 20 years or more off. But I think in the meantime, you know, we've simply been flexible with enforcement when situations arise, like the National Folk Festival, where a resident who parks, who is a resident in downtown, who has a parking garage permit and can't get in the garage, we simply offer them another location to go during the event that impacts them. And again, as the council president indicated, even during the National Folk Festival, people could have parked in the garage. They could have -- they would have had to park on the top floor, which is for some reason verboten, and, you know, people avoid the top floor, but.
Does the city maintain parking enforcement services 24/7, or are they restricted to normal business hours?
5:00 p.m. Yeah, there's.
24/7 it is. Thank you.
And on the weekends, no parking regulations.
Yeah.
Well, I think the garage hours are different, but enforcement is different.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, there'll be reason for enforcement to be increased.
Yep, yep, I agree with you. Any questions about that?
Do you have a.
Yeah, grab a mic.
Did you guys in that document address anything from a guest pass scenario, or is that not under consideration?
With respect to the developer's agreement, no, not at all. And truth be told, that's a donut that doesn't get filled. I think from the standpoint of parking administration, those circumstances will effectively address that type of circumstance on its own. From an actual scheduled term sheet for guest passes, no. Even though the parking garage may not be experiencing near its full capacity in terms of users, eventually, and hopefully, that's a circumstance that does become a conversation. And as a result, the request for the developer's agreement is exclusively limited to residents. They are not entitled to anything insofar as their guests are concerned.
Okay.
Okay, we have one final item, and that's a capacity fee waiver resolution. Oh, yeah, sure.
Just want to make real clear with respect to the temporary construction and permanent maintenance easement, there's been a lot of discussion about the first portion of that title, the temporary construction. And obviously, with respect to the property ownership of the alley, it's incredibly important that that get confirmed for everyone. But the permanent maintenance portion of that easement, I think sometimes has been not discussed enough. Effectively, what the developer's saying is, look, we're taking full responsibility of it, and if there's any impact on the city, we're indemnifying you for it. It's in the agreement. And that was intended to be in there originally, and then it's been beefed up since.
Good, appreciate that. Thank you.
So for capacity fees, if you'll recall, we've had a bank of 300 EDUs from the Linn's of the Week property that we've been shipping away at now for some years. And so this is another waiver request to use some of those EDUs. The development that is on 130 and 132 East Main Street, the residential units, have already come before you and received capacity fee waivers. So this request is for the 31 apartments that will be on 144 East Main Street, which is the chamber building, but it also includes the new event space that's at 130 and 132 on the top, because ultimately, this will be re-subdivided and consolidated in all one property. So we've lumped that into the same request. So with the event space, we did look at other event properties within the city and what their water usage is, and that's how we determined the EDU rate. So for both the apartments and the event space, we're looking at a waiver request of 35 EDUs total. Let's see, the current capacity fee rate of $3,533, this request is equivalent to $123,655. Again, this is not something the city is paying out. We have a bank of EDUs. So of that 300 EDUs that we started with, we have allocated out 213.64 EDUs. They do have expiration dates, and I do track that. So right now, everything's been on schedule, none have expired. All the waiver requests that we've put out have moved along, and that development's kept moving. But I thought that's important to note, because, you know, that potential still exists for one of those developments to slide, and I just want to make sure you're aware. Also, I'll note that I am working with the mayor and the administration on some other potential plan for once these 300 EDUs are gone. Is there another incentive that we would like to have? Because essentially, if we.
We have 51 left.
We will have 51 left. That's exactly what I was going to say, so.
I have this EDU. The only thing I can remember is the EDU.
Yes, so if this is approved, we'll have 51 left. As per the ordinance that established this EDU bank, this project is eligible, it meets all the criteria, it is in the central business district, and is redevelopment that is not eligible for affordable housing. So it does meet all the requirements. So we do recommend this waiver.
Okay, any questions about that? Any problems with it? I think it's a good idea, though, that we work on that at some point.
Exactly, yes.
Because 51.
Yeah, that could go very quickly.
If you look at this month's Planning Commission agenda alone.
That's why I'm saying it, because I've seen the agenda, and I'm, yeah.
Any one of those products could possibly.
Amanda, it is possible that the development of 144 will encroach ever so smallly onto 119 East Market Street. Would that have any impact on the language of the resolution?
Well, you are going to end up consolidating it all.
Yes, all four parcels into one.
I think we'll be okay with that. I'm the intent of this.
Okay. And we're not even sure it's going to encroach.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. That's all I had.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Happy New Year to you.
There were some revisions that were noted to the documents. What is that for me to make and then to shoot over to the city, or is that for me to?
You guys have.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood.
And this is a priority, so we need to get this done.
Thank you guys for your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think, do we want to, at some point, have a conversation about the EDUs, a plan?
They're going to, I swear, they're working on.
We're working on legislation. Amanda's drafting something. And we'll bring it to council. I thought you were going to bring up the other thing.
Which one?
State legislation.
Well, yeah, that, too. Yeah, we need to.
Yeah. Should we address that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll just give an update. The municipalities of Ocean City, Salisbury, Denton, Cambridge, Berlin, Chestertown, and others since, Easton, and others since, all of the Eastern Shore County seats are actively working to put in legislation for a statewide tax differential bill. So that is in the works.
Sweet.
Which would obviously be a huge benefit to every business and taxpayer in Salisbury, and every resident in Salisbury. I feel strongly we should also put in a Waukesha County bill, but we need support from our county council members to get that. And the Salisbury Board of License Commissioners bill will also be submitted. So we have sponsors, and it is going to move forward.
Fantastic.
Fingers crossed. And the business community is meeting to discuss it, and the license holders in the city, and they are 100% supportive.
Yeah, they're ready. They're ready.
Excellent.
They're ready.
Well, thank you, everybody. This has been a very productive session, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.